So we're going to call the meeting to order. And should we start with the pledge allegiance?
Yes.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have this term in place.
Probably should do a roll call, Jane.
Yeah, Marsha, would you like to do the roll call for us?
Mayor Marion.
Vice Mayor Walker. Mr. Commissioner Arthur Reed.
Here.
Mr. Scotty.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
For the record, we'd like that Mr. Walker is absent. Okay, the purpose of tonight's meeting is specifically to discuss the proposed budget for the fiscal year that'll end June 30th, 2016. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Calvin to kind of give us an overview of the proposed budget that's in front of us.
Okay, thank you. One thing, I guess some housekeeping I wanted to clarify, did you list the mayor as being here?
Yes, I did.
No, you won't be able to.
Okay.
He has to be, for the record, he has to be physically present to be counted.
Got it.
All right, what you have in front of you is the proposed budget for fiscal year 2016. One of the first things, and you bear with me, we're trying a couple new things this year since we're getting out to the community through social media. I want to take advantage of that and be able to show residents certain things. So the first thing we're going to look at here is sort of the synopsis of the budget, and I'm looking at the graphs first. The elected body, you have each of these pie graphs blown up individually. The first one I'm looking at is the expenses, and you can see by this graph that we are proposing here a total of $1,847,442.83 of expenditures. And when you look at that, the pie graph represents the individual departments of the general fund. And we're going to cover this in a little bit more detail later on because again, we want to educate our residents who are able to watch this video in the next couple of days of how the budget is put together. As you're aware, the general fund is made up of essentially nine individual departments, and that's what you see this pie graph represents with the police department here being this reddish brick color having the largest expenditure here. And then you start to see where your general administration, your planning and zoning in green, public works is in the purple, streets and sidewalks is in the light blue, solid waste is in the goldish color, parks is, what would you call that, even lighter blue? Light, light, light blue?
Turquoise.
Turquoise. And then the debt service is in a pink, and then disaster is in a very, very light green that it's actually so small that you don't really see it. I'll get into sort of the background of each one of these departments as we get into them. The next graph I want to show you is revenue without grants and loans. And the reason why I want to show you that is because the theme that we're going to be talking about here that I've talked about for the last couple of years is the, despite the recession that has hit everybody, the town has been able to not raise real estate taxes for, you know, for a couple of years now. And unfortunately, we've had to raise our water rates, but the water and sewer rates don't pay for these other services here. And as I've warned every year, that we're getting to the point where we need to, we need to put together a long-range plan to start making our revenue more accurately reflect our needs of the community because we can't just keep cutting needs every year and expect to be able to get the same end result of residents getting the services that they need. So that's what this endeavor hopes to start to lay the groundwork tonight is to talk about the serious issues that the town has. They're serious only if we ignore them. They're not serious if we put together maybe a five- to 10-year plan on dealing with these so we're not dealing with them in one swoop like we had to a couple of years ago with the water and sewer, we can spread it out. So what often happens is the revenue of the town is made up of real estate, property taxes, personal property tax, income tax, a variety of different things make up the revenue that we bring in, and those revenues can become skewed when we start to account for grants or loans that come in. And if I'm going to be pressing upon people that we have to watch our revenues compared to our expenditures, I wanted to pull the grants and loans and reserve fund transfers out so that you can see that in this scenario here, we are, let me pan over here to the left, we are without grants, loans, or reserve fund transfers, we're looking at $1.5 million in revenue coming in compared to the $1.8 that we talked about going out. Now, although I had pulled the grants and loans out of this, out of the revenue side, in reality, that same number, in other words, the $362,000 of additional money of revenue is made up of grants, loans, and prior fund balance transfers.
One, two, three, one, two.
Okay, $362,000 and some change of our revenue is actually expense on the expense side too. So the number is a tad bit skewed because you can take the 362 out of your revenue, but we're not taking it out of the expense side. But the main thing I wanted to do is for people to have an idea of what the actual expenditures are and then what the actual revenue coming in and how much we are dependent upon other revenue sources to be able to provide those services. And we'll talk about what those services are. With that said, all of our general services, we are able to meet with our revenue streams. Where we run into a problem is infrastructure and things like that that have not been addressed in some cases in many decades. And if you remember back in February, I talked about anywhere from $15 to $18 million of infrastructure needs. Some of that $15 to $18 million is not in the proprietary fund, it's in the general fund. And so although we can make our daily day-to-day ends meet rather comfortably, we're not able to spend money to redo all the streets or redo, replace our fleets. For instance, I've said this before, we have a backhoe which our public works crews use to dig up the water lines. We're all familiar with how often they have to get out and take care of our infrastructure. That backhoe is over 22 years of age, and you can imagine the wear and tear that it goes through. It can cost you upwards of $200,000 to buy a new backhoe. And so when you look at the total real estate tax that we bring in, which is about $800,000, imagine us having to go out of pocket one year for that $200,000 for that backhoe. And then you start to think about all your police cars, your public works vehicles, you're going to see we're putting some money in the maintenance on this building, we're going to address some of that also. So we have some needs that we can't ignore, and I'm not suggesting that anybody's ever ignored them before, but we definitely cannot ignore them or not address them going forward. So when you add the grants, loans, and prior fund balance transfers back in, our revenue inflow is actually $1,874,493 compared to $1,847,442 in expenses. So we have roughly a $15,000-plus positive cash flow on the general expense side. The next item that I wanted to go over with you folks is the, basically a cheat sheet that I put together that some of the concepts behind the budget I want to address upfront so that when we get into the actual budget nuts and bolts, it'll make a little bit more sense. So, an overview of the budget. The budget is comprised of two major funds. The general fund, which is broken into nine individual departments that track the revenue and expenses of each of those departments individually. The second major fund is the proprietary fund that is broken into a water department and sewer department, with each respective department tracking revenues and expenses individually in there. In developing the budget, there are certain concepts regarding revenues and expenses sharing that are incorporated into the development of the proposed budget. For instance, employee staffing is allocated based upon percentages of assigned tasks or responsibilities for each employee as it relates to each respective department. And I'll show you an example of that. This is, these are all of our employees in the town of Rising Sun, and in the general fund, you have general administration, police, code enforcement, public works, streets and sidewalks, trash and recycling, park and recreation, emergency management, and then the two proprietary funds are made up of the water and the sewer departments. So these percentages here represent how the overhead costs for those employees are divided within those individual departments. And to give you an example of one, Ron Thomas, who is our director of public works, but he has the primary license for operating our water system, our well system. So when you look at, in general administration, none of his overhead is associated with that. Obviously, the police department, he's got no overhead there, code enforcement, none. 5% of his salary cost or overhead is in public works, 4% is in streets and sidewalks, trash and recyclables is 3%, park and recreation is 3%, emergency management is zero, the water fund is 54%, and the sewer fund is 31%. So in looking at that, when you think about the bulk of what our public works department members do, they cut trash, they take care of the parks, so that's why there's a percentage put, yeah, cut trash. They collect trash, and they cut grass in the parks, so that's why you see these percentages. But where we spend most of our overhead is what they do in the water and sewer department. In other words, when they're calling in for water main breaks, those expenses of having them out there are not charged against the general fund per se, they are charged against the water and sewer fund. So there isn't really an exact science in this. In other words, I don't have databases here that talk about how many hours they've done in each one of the departments. It's more or less sort of a gut feel for what is a fair allocation for that. So that's an example of how the costs for employees are broken down. And then, I get the feeling we lost them out. Yeah, I think we lost them out. Have to wait for them to call back in. So that's how the employee overhead is broken down. You're going to see later on in the budget that we actually use percentages for other things that are shared, like buying a new piece of equipment, how that is shared within the individual departments. Now let's talk about some of the big things that impacted our budget this year. One was healthcare. Despite what we might want to believe in terms of what the new healthcare regulations were going to do in terms of price of healthcare, I can tell you that we really haven't seen that here, and we are, for the most part, equal to a small business. We have 11 employees that collect or are given healthcare coverage from the town, and this is what we have been seeing just in the last two years. The cost of annual health insurance premiums in 2014, 2015 was $108,322. The plan that we were with, which I won't name the carrier, was subject to a premium cost increase in 2015 and 2016 to $129,361, or a 19.42% increase in the premium cost alone. This would have impacted our budget across the board by $21,039.92. So remember when we talked about not raising taxes, and last year, we balanced the budget with about $1,000 to spare between revenue and expenses. So you can see right away where a $21,000 increase, you know, is something that has to be navigated. Given the projected $21,000 increase in annual health insurance premiums, and through aggressive pricing and work with a broker, a plan of equal coverage was found, and the increase in cost was reduced by 9.17% to a new projected annual premium cost of $117,503. So our premium cost went up about $9,500 from last year, not the $21,000 if we would have stayed with the original plan. Total health insurance cost comprised of premium payments and deductible payments. Total overall cost of healthcare coverage to the town in 2014, 15 was $148,322. But again, through the aggressive pricing and work with the broker, our new carrier has resulted in our annual healthcare cost, total cost to the town, will actually decrease to $127,352. So we went basically from $148,000 to $127,000 by shopping around with a different carrier for a reduction of 14.37%. But there's some other things that are in there that create that. So that reduced our budget cost by $21,318. Again, we're tightening reins all through the budget, and one of the things we're doing is requiring a greater premium, insurance premium copay from the employees. It's going from 7% to 8%, which for someone who has family coverage, that will be an additional $155 a year on top of what they're paying now. For married with a spouse, it's $104 per year increase, and then a single person is $50 increase. So the total across-the-board increase in employee premium contribution is $1,175. The town's contribution commitment to the healthcare deductible has been reduced by 70%. Total across-the-board contributions to the deductible have been reduced, again, for a total of $22,500. Do we have you, Travis?
Yeah, it was getting too loud, the lunch crowd, I guess, and a band started, so I moved. So, yeah.
Okay.
I can't see you, but you can probably see me.
You can't see anything on the screen?
No, I can't see anything on the screen, but I can hear you.
Okay. All right, continuing on, the, one of the reasons for the reduction of the 70.31% total reduction is that the employees' contribution to the healthcare deductible will be increased to $1,600 for family coverage, $1,600 for married with a spouse, and $800 for single coverage. So the total across-the-board increase to the employee is $15,200. So essentially, what we're doing is requiring the employees to pay a greater percentage of the healthcare cost, and that's one way we're offsetting the large increases to the premiums in general. So a synopsis or a summary of that is that the town's cost for healthcare coverage was decreased by $43,819 in total across the board, and the employees' share of the healthcare cost was increased by $16,375 for a positive swing to the town budget of $60,193. So that's basically, for 11 employees, we're saving $60,000 by changing the way we're doing the healthcare coverage. The overtime cost analysis, this is something else that, again, this, be honest with you, it comes on the back of some of our employees, but again, obviously, everybody has to contribute across the board to this. So public works overtime can be projected as scheduled overtime consisting of weekend coverage of sewer and water plants and on-call status. Scheduled overtime hours will be reduced by 46.7% from 139 scheduled hours per employee down to 74 hours of employee, per employee. Now, what I mean by that, let me see if I can bring this sheet up for you to explain This is the total number here of overtime hours that our public works employees actually worked in the last fiscal year for an average of 223 hours across the board. And as I talked about, scheduled overtime is things that we essentially know are going to happen, like every weekend, our guys would come in for three hours on Saturday and three hours on Sunday. And then our guys come in, obviously, on holidays and work three hours there. And the other thing that was going on is that our employees were automatically given, and this has been done for decades, they were given four hours for being on-call regardless of whether or not they were called in. So that is something that we could always look at a crystal ball and know at least what a bulk of those hours were going to be every year. And then there were a certain number of hours that you could always anticipate the employees being called in for overtime, but you never quite knew it. That's where you get your water main breaks and stuff like that. So the, one of the things we're going to do, the first area we're making a cut in is in the call-in. We're no longer going to give the employees just four hours of time and a half simply for being available to respond. We're going to change that to a minimum of four hours of time and a half if they are called in. So if they're called in for an hour's worth of work, they're going to get four hours of time and a half, and that's the benefit for being on-call, is actually having been called in and getting paid that way. And the best way I can describe that is the analogy, I hate to put it this way, the old analogy, sometimes you're the windshield, sometimes you're the bug. In this particular case, we are, if the employee gets called in in that particular week, we will have paid them more money than if we would have just had them on straight being on-call per se. But our employees don't get called in every single week. When we looked at our records, we could safely say that every two weeks is when somebody actually gets called in. So this number right here, and some might not be able to see, the 26 total days of call-in time used to say 52. So just to give you an example of how that changes it, if I put 52 in here, and if you see the call-in, the call-in pay is, the way we propose to do it, the cost to the town would be $3,670 under the way we're doing it now. Under the old way, when I put the 52 back in there, that number, you know, doubles to $7,341. So these are little subtle ways that we are going to roll back some of our costs. The other thing is that now that we have the wastewater treatment plant about 95% done and actually operating now and scheduled to be turned over to us officially in about another 30 days or so, there's no need for our employees to do any testing at the sewer plant. So that's going to eliminate an hour and a half out of that three hours. So the weekend, the shift hours here, they worked, there were 52 weekends that were worked. This shift hour number used to be six. So when you look at the amount of money we pay right now under the new scenario, it was $5,505 is what we would be paying. If I turn that number back into six hours here, it makes the $5,511,000. And those were hard expenses that we were having every single year regardless of what actually took place per se. So those are some other areas that we are rolling back the budget. So you can see across the board here, going back to the cover letter here. We are decreasing overtime pay per employee by $3,671, oh, I'm sorry, across the board is $3,671 by replacing the being on-call with the you get paid if you get called in. And then the weekend coverage of the sewer plant is being reduced by $5,505. So again, these are all the things that we are doing to offset your normal cost increases every year and then some of our higher cost increases that we get. The other thing I wanted to jump to is our electric and heating cost analysis. The total electrical expenses for the town increased 34% just in one year alone from a projected total cost of $59,847 to a new projected at the end of the year cost of This cost is mainly due to electric at the town hall and in park and recreation, something we have to check. There were some high spikes in those areas. So I don't know if it's the lighting on the basketball court not operating right or whatever, but those are some areas we need to look at. So our total budget expense is $20,304. Okay, going into next year, we can expect $20,000 more of expenses in electric alone, and so where are we going to find that money elsewhere in the budget? The other thing, which really wasn't too bad, despite the extremely cold winter, the total expense for heating oil actually decreased 36.33% from a projected total cost of $11,758 to a new cost of $7,486. This reduction can be attributed to a new policy on the temperature settings on the thermostats. This is something we've been doing since in the wintertime. We have made it just a little bit colder here in the town hall and asked employees to dress accordingly. And in the summertime, although we make it more suitable here, as Dave can attest, today we were sweating downstairs. We've been keeping the temperature at like 75 degrees throughout the building in the daytime. So we're trying to do a variety of different things to keep costs down. And the other thing I would say is that although the winter was very, very cold, and I say this jokingly, I think our public works guys were out on the streets so much fixing water lines and stuff like that and spreading salt that they probably weren't really in the, you know, in the public works garage trying to stay warm per se. So we're not exactly sure what some of these anomalies are, but we'll continue to look at that. Vehicle fuel cost, the motor vehicle fuel cost for the town actually decreased 19% from a projected total cost of $32,060 to an actual cost of $25,947. So to back up, for last year's budget, we estimated the total fuel cost to be $32,000, and it looks like it's going to come in at about $25,000. Although there will hypothetically be less distance traveling with the public works crews to deliver sampling testing from the sewer plant, the budget proposes to keep the projected cost at last year's projections in anticipation of additional fuel cost increases. So basically, what I'm saying is that I'm not really giving a statement as to why the costs are less, although we've had, as we all know, less police officers on the street. So that cuts down on a little bit. I'm not, we're not, I don't recommend us being fooled into lowering that because we have no idea what the fuel costs are going to be for next year. So we'll keep that number actually high. Now let's look back at some of the more specific things about the general budget notes. As directed, the employees shall receive As directed, the employees shall receive a COLA increase of 3% with a possible merit increase up to an additional 2% based upon employees' performance and evaluation. And this is where we'll step back and look at this for a second. One of the things that we, one of the ways that we are able to cut cost in town, one of the vehicles we use is by improving upon efficiencies of what we're doing. And it is a, an ongoing exercise that we go through, and like in any workplace, employees will make mistakes and there can be trickle-down effects. It could be a daily reconciliation. As you know, we take a lot of pride in having a tight watch over the taxpayers' money. So we have multiple layers of reconciliation in play at all times. Sometimes that reconciliation actually does what we want it to do and finds, you know, mathematical mistakes that somebody does or doesn't, you know, often, you know, down at the front desk, somebody can have a, you know, a $10 bill that they had to pay, they came in and gave somebody 100, or they came, they came in and gave somebody $10, the person enters it into our data system and inadvertently puts another one, and now the system is saying there should be 110 dollars collected, but there was only $10 of money collected, or vice versa. We catch that, but we spend a lot of time catching that, which cuts into efficiencies. So one of the things we want to start doing that hasn't been done here before is that instead of employees getting, you know, two, three, four, and in the past, it sometimes they used to get 5% raises, just that's it across the board, we want to provide more of a, a performance-based incentive program for employees. So there will be a 3% increase and then a 2% COLA increase. And one of the reasons for this is that in reality, the amount of money that the employees are now paying towards their healthcare coverage and the overtime is actually greater across the board than the total amount of the raise that's being given. So as you're aware in the discussions that we've had about that, we had originally proposed a, a lower rate increase, but the disparity between how much we were actually, the employees were now paying, you know, night and day, one year to the next, was much greater than the raises. So the idea was to go from the 2% to the 3% to try to offset that. So that's still open for discussion, but the budget is set up with those numbers in place. The police administrative assistance position has been eliminated and the funds have been redirected to item four below. And what item four below is, is a new detective sergeant position will be created in the police department. The position will be a mid-level management position assigned to handle case investigations, presentation, administrative data management, and internal, internal affairs-type duties. If you remember, I think it was the last town meeting, the chief presented you with a survey of the staffing of other area police departments. And we are one of the small handful of communities that provide police protection. We're, you can take, you know, and we provide, we, we strive to provide 24-hour coverage, although we don't have the staffing in place right now to do that, the 24-hour coverage. But the system is set up to provide that 24-hour coverage. But when you look at our population, our staffing is actually less, significantly less in northeast and some other communities. Now, there's a variety of variables that come into play on how your staffing works out, but one of the areas that we are really deficient in is a, a sergeant-type position. And we've seen that with some of our internal affairs investigations, and it's, you know, all police departments, any good police department has a segment of internal affairs because you want those individuals held to the highest standard. So when residents call and might be concerned about the officer, and let's remember, there's that old saying, that our officers usually interact with people when they're having the worst day of their life. So nothing here or nothing that is said is going to make them feel very good about that interaction. And unfortunately, sometimes there are complaints filed against our police department that we don't want to just dismiss, we want to investigate them. But our system is not really the way it should be because under LEOVR, which that's a lesson for another day, we put our police chief in a position of being the investigator, the judge, the jury, and the executioner, so to speak. And that's not really fair to the officer either. And we've had an issue where, in order to get around that, we have been outsourcing some of these inquiries to other law enforcement agencies, and they are bogged down, and that's one of the reasons why we see such long delays in that turnaround, whereas if we simply had a supervisory position in here that would be a shift supervisor, would, would write, would, would track or be the first responsible person for the initial complaint, that supervisor could do the investigation, hand it off to our police chief, who can then decide how to deal with it. So it's, it's the same as reconciling our money and having checks and balances in there. We need checks and balances and how we deal with our staffing, too. The other thing that I think is a benefit is we're taking the sergeant position and we're adding another title to it, and that's detective. And the reason being for that is maybe back in the day, you could bring somebody in for whatever reason, arrest them for drunken disorder, or today's, you know, it could be domestic, you know, a variety drug possession. At one time, you could put that person in the jail cell and then maybe go back on patrol because they're in the cell, so to speak, and wait for the, the detention center to call and say, okay, we have it, the city judge is on, you can bring that individual now, or down. You no longer can do that. So when you're basically a one-horse town in terms of one officer on duty, when that officer interacts with somebody and has to detain them or go through that process, we don't have any coverage out on the street at that point. Now, sometimes that's not a big deal, but where it does become a big deal is, let's say that the officer that's handling the arrest is now going to be off for 10 days because of shift difference and vacation time, there's no follow-up on the investigation of that case. So let's say there was a breaking and entry, and normally you would want to call the property owner the next day and get a list of everything that was stolen so that you could put it in a report, and the homeowner needs that for the insurance company because that's what they want to be able to do your claim, they want a police report. Well, you could have maybe a, a three, five, 10-day wait because you have to wait for that officer to come back. And even when that officer comes back, again, when they are handling those details, they're not out on patrol. So the idea, in addition to having this sergeant provide supervisory oversight, is to also have all those types of things handed off to that detective sergeant. So the officer now is free to turn this whole case over to the detective and then get back out on patrol doing the things that, you know, we really need them to be doing. So that's where we're basically taking the admin position and taking the, the capital cost for that and redirecting it into a position that will provide more. Now, the ad, the admin stuff will be picked up by the police chief and this new detective sergeant because we're not dispatchers here, so we don't pay somebody to pick up the phone and dispatch the police. Our administrative assistant essentially does data entry, and so that data entry will be absorbed by others within the department itself. The budget includes two new police cars in here. The budget also includes two new public works vehicles. The police cars, as we know, we've spent, you're going to see in the budget, upwards of about $10,000 in repairs alone on some of these vehicles, and one of them, we could probably easily spend another, you know, five or so thousand dollars on it. So the idea is given the mileage and the wear and tear is to replace those older vehicles with new vehicles. So the budget includes two new police cars. The budget also includes two new public works vehicles. Two of our vehicles are about 15 years of age, if not older. And I give, I commend our one public works employee, Darryl Bader, he does a fantastic job maintaining his truck, and it looks really good, but it's actually, I believe, about 17 years of age, and it's got a lot of wear on it. So it includes two new public works vehicles and plows. The budget also includes $100,000 of paving, and that paving is predominantly earmarked for the Ryan Drive area where the water line breaks were at. I'll get into more details about that when we get into the budget. The budget also includes about $40,000 of stormwater piping repairs, and that covers the big 36-inch stormwater pipe that's broken down in Keppel's Mill Court, and then there's some extra money in there for additional, for some additional stormwater piping repairs because some of our older developments are, the stormwater piping is starting to wear out in some of our older developments, and every year we spend money, you know, replacing these stormwater culverts. The budget also includes $10,000 of basically repairs to the water plant buildings down at Diddy Richards Park. If you drive by there, it looks like somebody hit the site with napalm or something, with the holes in the roofs and, and stuff like that. So we want to put a little bit of money into dressing those buildings up down there. A lot of this, some of this cost, we believe we can reduce by doing some of the work ourselves, and that's something that we've been doing here for the last couple of years, is doing work internally ourselves to keep costs down, and this is another area where we think that we can do that. The next item is to reseal the parking lot, our main parking lot. This is something that's been carried into budget every year, but we haven't done it. It's roughly about $8,000 to seal the cracks and to re-code it. We were holding that out because Commissioner Warnock was working on a grant application with DNR that potentially would have enabled us to make a series of rain gardens in there that would take care of the drainage, which could have allowed us to redo the parking lot. So instead of, we were holding out, instead of seal coating the parking lot and then having it torn up in a year, we were waiting to see how that was going to work out. As it works out, they're not going to be able to put rain gardens in the parking lot. Here are some things that I know that people are interested in. It, it really gives you a warm and fuzzy feeling to see, you're going to see we have a balanced budget and we're doing some of these things, but you've got to see we don't have a really, really healthy, balanced budget the way we should be striving for in the future. And so some of the things that we were not able to include, although this is in the water system, is we're estimating at about $3 million to replace the various four- and six-inch undersized lines that are the root of a lot of our brown water complaints in town. And if you remember, I showed a graph back in February that we had had 36 water main breaks in town over a five-year period, and they were all on these undersized, four-inch old lines that have been around forever. And so our goal was to replace those lines, but obviously, $3 million is, is, is a tough pill to swallow, so we're going to have to continue to work on that through grants. And as Commissioner Arthur Rees can attest to, part of the grant application that we're doing for Ryan Drive includes a phase-two grant application with USDA to come in and pay for the replacement of these water lines, but we did not want to jeopardize the Ryan Drive project timing-wise because we have so much legwork to do to get the grant application ready for the undersized water lines. When I talked about that pie graph earlier about revenues minus loans and grants and stuff like that, in our budget, there are expenses that are tied to those grants, loans, and reserve fund transfers. So what I mean is, they're not set in stone, not that anything in your budget is set in stone, but the, the, if we get grant monies in some cases, we will move forward and do the initiative. A good example of that you're going to see is the economic development study for about $40,000. We have applied to a grant for USDA to do that study. If the grant money comes in, fine. From a budgeting standpoint, you're going to see that for everything that I want to put in as a placeholder, I have to show the expense and I have to show the revenue. So that's why our revenue numbers get inflated by loans and stuff like that, because if we wanted to be part of our one-year plan of doing something, I have to show that expense and that revenue in there. So I want to clarify that there are some projects in here that won't get done if we don't get grants or if the board doesn't transfer money from reserve funds, which is spelled out in here, or apply for loans. So those are sort of the 12 big items here or the key points to look at. The next thing I wanted to do is basically get right into the budget itself, and the first item, well, let me go to the bottom because that's the one that everybody's interested in, is that when you get all the way down to the bottom, our projected revenue in the general fund is 1.862, $1,862,488.36. Again, this includes loan proceeds that are shown at account number 104109, and you can find that on this sheet for two police cars. And it also includes the purchase of the two public works vehicles in there. So our revenue is at 1.86, and our expenses are at 1.847 for a positive cash flow at the end of the budget year of $15,005.52. Just from a learning exercise, any business will tell you, and even your household expenses, they always tell you, you want to have about six months' worth of household expenses covered in reserve. So if you take our $1.8 million of expenses, hypothetically, our budget should roll over a $900,000, or start working towards contributions. They put at least nine, or $900,000 of reserve funds in, in account. We have that to some degree with some of our reserve funds, but it's, it's to some degree more or less by accident, by pass, and not, and not by design. So ideally, when we do budgets in the future, we should have positive cash flows in the six-digit numbers because we're always one disaster away from something happening where we've got to go in and drain our rainy day funds out, and we don't want to be put in that position. So although it's a $15,000 profit, and although it's better than what we've done in years past, for the most part, it's still nowhere near where we really ideally should be. So going back up into the general fund, let me see if I have this here. I'm not saying it. The revenue here, the revenue is, I have, I have variable spreadsheets in here. In other words, a lot of these numbers all come from another sheet. So for instance, and I wanted to show people this, whatever you, if you're familiar with Microsoft Excel, you can get to do a lot of work for you. So you see numbers here, but these numbers all come from formulas, they all come from other spreadsheets here. So you can see a variety of spreadsheets where instead of getting lost within this document, making changes when you do the budget, you go into other spreadsheets and you organize them. In other words, I have a spreadsheet for revenue, I have a spreadsheet for shared expenses, and I make the changes in there, and then those changes are automatically populated into the database here. So let me get rid of that so we can go back to the numbers here. All right, so in the general fund, there's a couple new line item accounts that I'm going to be highlighting. The colors don't really mean anything to you other than drawing attention to something in the document to make sure that you either ask a question if you're not sure, or I remember to say something about it. Here's a big one that I did, the income tax. Our income tax is divided into, is, is split out among two funds, basically, our general services and then our debt services where we divide our income tax. Because of the recent Wynn case, W- Because of the recent WYNN case with the Comptroller's Office, there is some level of reduction of income tax receipts that could begin to trickle down to the local municipal level. So, in order, every year, we've been increasing this number. This past year, I decreased that number down. I rolled it, I reduced the income tax by 3% to reflect that.
Calvin, was that the piggyback tax?
Yes, yes. So, we don't really know, we're not even sure it's going to affect us or not, but...
Because it only affects large incomes because I looked at that, it was covered under that. But it's good to reduce it just in case.
What's that?
It affects people that live outside of Maryland.
Yeah. So, I don't know what impact it's going to be, so I just threw 3%, a 3% reduction in there to cover it. So, when you look at your budget sheets, you see at the top, revenue, and this page makes it real easy, expenses. You can see what the projected revenue for the general services is 177,302.61, and the projected expenses for this account is 177,302.61. Now, here's the thing I was telling some of the elected officials here earlier, is when we do the real estate tax, in the past, the town would put the real estate tax basically in one fund. And when you divide the general fund into your different departments, for instance, the police department cost us about $700,000 to operate this year, and that includes all those new police car purchases. If someone were to look at our budget, they would see the police department costing us $700,000 and see nothing on the revenue because they only collect nickels and dimes. And public works department really has no revenue coming in. So, we take the real estate and we take the total number of what we project, and then we populate it in as revenue in each one of the departments to get them as close to revenue neutral as possible. It doesn't change the end number of what we think we're going to get, we just don't hold it in one nest egg so that when people look at the budget, they say, I can tell you what your problem is, you're losing $170,000 in the public works department because they don't collect any revenue in there. So, my point is, when you look at some of the real estate collection taxes from one year to the next, they can be skewed because they're not really related to one another. In other words, what we budgeted last year was based upon what the expected expenses were going to be. And if the expenses are much higher this year, then the real estate tax projected revenue allocation is going to be higher. If the expenses are much lower, it'll be lower in that category. So, looking at this year's numbers versus last year's numbers doesn't always give you... Doesn't always give you an accurate breakdown... What, he can't see it?
He can't see this.
Okay. It does, it doesn't always give you, it's not a good barometer when you're looking at a $10,000 difference in real estate tax to say, oh, my gosh, we lost money. In this particular case here, as you can see, the number here is populated from the revenue stream. This is something where the number's in there, but it's not showing up on the screen here, but it's calculated in the numbers. It's a glitch in the system here that just materialized here. So, when you look at our revenues, our real estate tax, personal property tax, public utilities tax, which is basically the personal property tax, whereas Delmarva, Armstrong, and the cell phone companies, they pay personal property tax, but it's separated out and called a utility tax here. Income tax, that's the one we were talking about, the Supreme Court case that could impact us. County local community impact grant, that's the casino fund. We sort of gave up, you know, allocating any money for that because we never, can never seem to get through the threshold of being picked for that, plus the revenues, I believe, are decreasing in that. The other thing is the tax differential. This is what we get from the county for our residents who pay tax in the county and in the town. The county gives a percentage of that money back because we, to help us pay for the services that are being provided because they don't have to provide the service. For instance, public works department, plowing of snow, street repair, water and sewer, they don't have to provide any of that. So, there's a formula that they use to give us money back to help us with those costs. So, unless, you know, these, there isn't a whole lot that goes on in the general administration. And the general administration is what covers basically your town administration. This is where things like the town's municipal dues for the Greater Rising Sun Chamber, the Cecil County Chamber, membership in the Cecil Heart for MML's Association, the Mayor's Association, donation to the fire company is in here. You will see that, and again, this is a recommendation, that we increase the donation to the fire company from $12,000 to $15,000, a $3,000 increase here. That's something that's open for discussion. Again, we have a balanced budget, but the budget does have a $3,000 increase to the fire department. When you get in, I was asked this question earlier of what this shaded area means. Again, this is, let me go and look at, here, like our health insurance, that comes from another program. And if you go back to the staff allocations here, in other words, 10% of my salary, Marcia's salary, Pamela Haynes, and the proposed utility billing group goes to general administration. When you get into the code enforcement department, our salaries go in there and overhead and percentages of public work. So, that is, that is a percentage of the total health insurance coverage. That's what it represents in the general services. And you'll see that in each one of the departments, that allocation. Here are some examples of sharing expenses. We have the town hall building here, and the town hall is the main hub of doing everything for park and recreation, streets and sidewalks, trash collection, the public works, the code department, the police department, and the sewer and water. So, when there are needs for the building, we share those costs among all those funds. So, when I look at town hall building and equipment upgrades, for instance, and I'll highlight this here so it might stand out a little better, when you look at that, I'm only proposing $360 for town hall building and equipment upgrades. And you would look at that and say, wow, $360, that's not going to do a whole lot on the building. But as you can see, it says, see shared expense. So, when I go to the shared expense here... Having a problem getting my other sheets opened here. This is operating on an earlier version of Word or Excel, and it's not doing... No, that's not going to give it to me. Maybe that's what I needed, wish to enable the content. Okay. Um...
When did you ask it, the project? When did you get it?
So, when I, when we go into the shared expenses sheet, this is what this looks like. And you see, here is the town hall building, equipment, and repairs. And the, we are projecting actually $23,000 of actual repairs to the town hall building. And this is where we can start to look at some of the other things that are in the budget. There's $15,000 for the town hall, repairing the town hall roof. We know the historic museum is leaking. It's been leaking for, you know, almost since the building was built, and we've been able to patch it. It's about time we get up there and figure out something with the roof in general. So, of the 15, there's $15,000 set aside to do the town roof, and then we've gotten prices in the past to redo the entryway to the police department in that parking lot because if you look at it, it's all rotted out from water leaking into it. So, now you see the general administration is paying $4,140 of the $23,000 total or 18% of the total cost. The code enforcement, for instance, is paying 16, or 17% of that. So, you start to see where the dollar amounts of what we're going to do are here, and they're divided among all the various accounts. So, I'll, to save some time, we'll go over these numbers to talk about some of the things that are budgeted. $15,000 for the roof and $8,000 to do the new police entry door. We have been talking about bringing audiovisual capability into the town meetings so that we can record and do the meetings ourselves in-house. And if you look down at the bottom, I have a line item account for town meeting video, town meeting audiovisual upgrade. And basically, what I'm doing is I'm setting aside $12,600 that can either be used for buying the equipment here or continuing to pay for the services provided. Now, there's a little bit, there's a little bit more money added in this in terms of paying for the upgrades. But what I've done is, let's just say, because we planned on doing it last year and we didn't get around to doing it. So, let's say we take a couple months or so before we decide to do that. I wanted to make sure that we had some money set aside to make up the difference of what we pay the contractor and out of that fund, and then still have money if we want to transition into doing it ourselves here. So, that's what that number represents.
Can you clarify those amounts again, Calvin, the cost right now for video in the town meetings on a contract basis is what?
It's about $12,000 and change.
And then, if you installed the equipment and budgeted what you...
We, our budget number we got last year is about $7,000 or $8,000 on it. So, one way or the other, we're either going to spend the money for the video or we're going to spend the money to buy the equipment.
Sorry, I just missed it.
So, that's how I handled it in the, for the line item.
Got it.
The other thing we have, I wasn't sure if the mayor was waving at me. Hold on a second. All right, try it now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
What I was going to say was, I think that it's really important that, I personally would like to see us transition to having our own equipment. You know that that's something that I've discussed with you and some of the board members, and it's not the fact that I don't think it's done well. I do think it's done well. And in fact, I would like to see, you know, if Mr. Cassie would be willing to do it with our equipment. I know that, we've talked about that before. But we make the commitment to putting audiovisual equipment, and we can use it for many years to come. So, I think that's important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to put you back in timeout.
Okay.
The other thing that we've done is, we've set aside $1,000 for cleaning the tile. We don't have that much tile in here, but it gets really bad, so we set aside $1,000 to have somebody come in and strip it, buff it, wax it. I'm not suggesting it costs $1,000, but we have a placeholder in there. We also have, let me scroll over here to see this, we, oh, for workplace upgrades, because of the potential additional sergeant's position, there might need to be some money spent in the actual workspace environment that they operate out of. So, there's, of a total 2,000 for workspace upgrades, 1,000 is set aside for the police department to make renovations they need, and then 1,000 is set aside for our conference room and record storage area. Anyone who's gone into the conference room knows that it's very tight, and we have that hallway, that second hallway going to the stairs. It's essentially 16 feet long, four feet wide, that doesn't really need to be there. So, we could expand our record storage room out into that area, and then also the conference room out into that area. This is another example where the $1,000 is more or less reflecting the material costs that we would do that in-house. The seal coating for the parking lots, again, that's the $8,000 I talked about. You can see how it's divided among general admin, police code enforcement, water, and sewer. Now, let me say this. Obviously, conceptually, you can say, whether it's white at means those departments are not paying for any of it. There comes a breaking point where if you saddle it on every single department, it really skews the numbers out of whack. And to really allocate it to a department, you might have to, in some cases, say, well, it's 0.25 of a percent, and you're tracking like $15 in the budget. So, we don't allocate it to all of the departments in all cases on some of these items. The other item that's a shared expense is a zero-tone mower for our guys. That is something that was in the budget last year for them to get a new zero-tone mower. What I'm proposing, and they run about $10,000, I'm proposing that we buy this zero-tone mower and actually keep it down at the wastewater treatment plant because there's a big chunk of grass down there now that has to be cut. So, instead of these guys hauling it back and forth on a trailer all the time, it could just be kept down there in one of the new garages. And so, that's why you see, in this particular item, you see 75% of that $10,000 is allocated to the sewer fund with the remaining 15% going to park and recreation, and then 10% going to the water. Because the water plant only has Diddy Richards Park, you know, inside the pen, so it doesn't really have that much of an area. These here, there's a lot of new accounts that have been created, and they have been created to better track cost sharing. So, in other words, everything that you see in these columns is essentially shared between more than one department. And then, the gray area here represents the dollar amount, and then, again, that gets populated into the database. There are some, just to go over some expenses that you might not be aware of, we pay, we pay roughly $5,000 a year for the leasing of our copy machines. This is something that we always try to put out for bid and to get a better price, and we'll do that again this year because this cost is creeping up on us again. The computer technical support and backup, just as I said that, the screen blinked. The backup for all of our servers, the police department server, the utility billing server, the town admin server, that's what these backup costs are. These costs also include the on-call technical support for our vendor to come out and assist it, figuring out whatever the bugs are here. The other thing is our utility billing system, which is when we collect our water and sewer bills and trash bills, that gets put into our database, and that's what, you know, tracks, you know, how much water people use and gives us the ability to print out reports. We pay like $6,269 a year for that. Our merchant credit card system, that's where we give residents the opportunity to pay for the utility bills using a credit card. We haven't really followed up with a report on that, but that, that card is actually doing much better than I think we ever anticipated. We're bringing in a sizable chunk of revenue on that, and we are bringing in, our revenue is more than easily covering the expense that we're paying in that. So, we're not losing money on the credit card as we thought we might at the beginning. You have your town video that we talked about, and then we have our election expense. You have your town video that we talked about, and then we have our election expense of thirty-two hundred dollars. And that consists of the leasing or the rental on the voting machines that are up here and then a couple hundred dollars that we put aside for, uh, refreshments for the, uh, judges and then the stifle that they get for being available. So those are the shared expenses here. When you go down, a lot of these budget line accounts all look the same because we track it in each of the individual things. There's, um, one I missed here on, and also I neglected to say, um, I put, the blue numbers down the side represent a line item. And then the red numbers at the top are the columns. So if you guys have any questions, you can direct me to, you know, that line number that way. One of the things I'm looking at is line A one oh two, the email hosting and archiving. And that's, that email hosting and archiving is in all of our accounts. Under the, um, public right to know and the saving of records, emails are something that hypothetically you're supposed to be preserving. So we do have a system now in place that automatically archives all of our emails. And obviously there's, you know, a cost associated with that. And then there's also the cost of having our email on a, uh, email exchange system. So moving, if there's no questions on general admin, we'll move to the police department. And the revenue in the police department is projected to be seven hundred and fifteen thousand three ninety-seven, and that pretty much matches the expense going out. You can see that of the real estate tax that we collect here, five hundred and forty-seven thousand of that real estate tax collected is allocated to the police department as what is used to pay for that. You see in here an example of loan proceeds. You're going to see in this document an expense for seventy thousand dollars for new police vehicles. Again, to make the budget flow outright, I got to show a revenue somewhere. So on line item F one thirty-four, I believe it is, you'll see seventy thousand dollars, uh, is for getting a loan. And, and that loan is based upon a four-year loan. Well, actually, that's, that's the loan proceeds coming in. I'll cover the actual loan in a second, but that, that's the loan proceeds coming in from the bank to offset the expenditure here. So when you look at the actual expenses in here, there's really nothing that jumps out that, you know, we haven't seen before. You can, uh, one of the things I'll show you is, um, line, uh, it would be B, B one fifty-one, and I'm looking for the account number, it's twenty dash six oh one oh one, auto expense fuel. That's where you can see our reduction in fuel because last year we predicted fourteen thousand dollars of fuel. Year to date through June, we're only at eight thousand five thirty-two, but we're projecting ten thousand dollars in that line item for next year. And here is, uh, line, I think it was F one fifty-four, is the expenditure of seventy thousand dollars for the police vehicles. So that seventy thousand washes out the loan proceeds on the revenue side.
And you said that's two police vehicles?
Excuse me?
Two. Two police vehicles.
Two vehicles.
Yes. Yes, for two vehicles.
Are they both going to be cars or we're going to have an SUV and a car?
I think they're both SUVs.
Buy both utilities. The price of them's about the same as the Sedan's.
The other thing that I did this year, um, is up, you can see it a little bit. You see where it says new account over here under shop with the cop and then the national night out. I think it's important, and, and I was talking to Commissioner Warnock about this today, of tracking our expenditures more finite on certain things like the shop with the cop and the national night out so we can actually see what it's costing us to do that. The way it is now, it just, it's a general line item expenditure in the budget and you really got to backtrack to get a number on what you actually spent on it. So from a budgeting standpoint, I think it makes it easier if we pull out some of those defined events that we're doing and create a line item account for them and then budget for them. So in the police department, you see the national night out is a new expense and the shop with the cop. And that is offset by a national night out contributions, a national night out fundraiser, and, and actually they still need to add the shop with the cop. And there, I have to add that line item in there. It's not showing up. So there are some, um, we can either get that money through contributions or maybe, which is how that program is funded, is by contributions from the businesses. But maybe the program grows into something where we're selling T-shirts or something that collects some revenues, so, um, differentiating between contributions and fundraisers. And you're going to see this concept, especially in park and rec also.
Calvin, did you say that shop with the cop should be under revenue also?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. The national night out is, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's what we need. I just want to make a note for myself.
Yes.
What amount is going in there?
Huh?
Shop with the cop, what amount is going in there?
The exact amount of the expense. We're just going to project in revenues that will raise that much to offset the expense. So we factored in the expense category of.
But there's neither a thousand dollars.
Use, use, what I did for placeholders on a lot of these, I just put five hundred dollars so that they washed out in the budget. So five hundred revenue, five hundred expense. If the chief is able to get more money or greater contributions, then we'll know that for the next year on it. So just to reserve placeholders, I don't spend a whole lot of time trying to anticipate a couple hundred bucks here and there. I just put a.
Five hundred or a thousand?
No, it's five hundred.
For shop with the cop?
Yes, but that, what I want to be clear is that's not saying we're only going to spend five hundred. If he gets more donations, it'll still wa-, it'll be a five hundred, it'll be a thousand revenue versus a thousand expense.
This is just a new item that we're going to start tracking.
Right.
This is basically creating direct accounts.
It's a, it's an educated guess this year and then we'll know next year more because we've never tracked it before.
So I guess what I'm being clear is, I, I don't want to send the impression, I don't know what he spent last year. It could have been a thousand dollars. I don't want to send the impression that we're cutting the shop with the cop by five hundred, we're just, they're placeholders. If it comes in more, it'll just show up in the end of the year budget next year as more money. I have no idea what he actually spends on that. Code enforcement, um, we bring in, um, with the real estate, um, counted on top of it, we bring in sixty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. If you subtract the real estate out of it, we bring in about fifteen thousand three hundred dollars in revenue through our code enforcement. And that obviously will pick up once building starts to pick up again. So we have, you know, rather small meager numbers in some of these line item, uh, accounts in here. There are also to explain certain things, um, one of the ways that we want to become more efficient is right now when we do purchase orders, we were sending some of our purchase orders down to Wagner's with just a term that said all funds. And within that, those people would go in and look at the funds and to some degree determine where to put them based upon some old information. By creating these new line item accounts, I want to get away from the old funds analogy and have our staff actually putting what accounts are supposed to go in because in going through the budget numbers, I find duplications of things. Where we have two line item accounts because somebody who got our purchase order one day down there put it in this account and then somebody put it in another account. So to be as accurate as possible, I want our people to take a more active role in targeting what those accounts are. So that's why we added more accounts and we've actually changed the descriptions of the accounts so that, um, our staff has a better understanding of what it is. So that's your code enforcement. Some things that could change that are placeholders in here, um, you know, we've been talking about a property maintenance code, uh, for the last couple of years. And I know that's something that the mayor, uh, really wants to move forward to on, you know, people from the chamber have been talking about it also, the need for some type of, uh, push for our property values through code enforcement. I'm not projecting any revenues on those types of things. So that revenue could actually be higher depending on what we end up doing. Our expenses here, um, they mainly consist of training, required training, memberships, um, and then our breakdown of expenses for having a planning commission and a zoning hearing board. And again, those numbers are always fluid because you never know how many zoning hearing board cases you're going to have in a year's time. So the good thing is if we have a zoning hearing case, they have to pay for it. So if we have more zoning hearing cases than what I've allocated for, the revenue goes up equal to the expense going out. So it becomes a wash. Here you have again your shared expenses for all the stuff involving the town hall building, like sharing in the cost of the fire sprinkler system, sharing in the cost of repaving the, or resealing the parking lot, shaving, savings, uh, sharing in the cost of the fire detection system, uh, utilities, heating. So all that is picked up by, uh, the various departments. Public works, and let me say this about public works. People in the past instinctively think, wow, there's only a hundred and nine, you know, you've got four employees and there's only a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars of expenses in there. It's because in the theory of public works, the only, the only task that they really do that is independent from park and recreation, sewer and water, trash collection, streets and sidewalks, is any type of maintenance here at the town hall building or maintenance at the public works garage or maintenance on stormwater. So my point is if you look here to, and I'm going down to F three fifty or line item accounts thirty dash sixty-three sixty. If you heard me say we had a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars of expenses, forty thousand of that is stormwater piping at Kepel's Mill. So again, it's not, I want to make sure people understand, when you look at our public works budget, it's not all that it costs to have those four guys or the entity of public works. This is just one of the departments that makes that up. So the public works department, as we talked about, one of their biggest expenses is in the stormwater piping, maintenance and repairs. Some new accounts that I made is a stone and fill account, which is thirty dash sixty-three sixty-five. And in most of the funds, the, the sewer, the sewer, the water, the park and recreation, the streets and sidewalks, the public works, you're going to see, um, sixty-three sixty-five. When we make what I call sister accounts in the various funds, we try to make sure that the last four numbers match in each one so that if you're looking for one and you know it's in the others, it makes it easier. So there's now a stone and fill line item in all of our departments whereas before it was only in the water fund. So that meant that when they were using stone to fix a pothole, it was being charged to the water fund because there was no place else to put it. So there's some diversification. The other thing that we're trying to do is more accurately track the paving cost associated with some of our repairs that we make. So every account now has a sixty-three seventy. It has a slightly different title where this one says stormwater paving repairs and replacement. Water will say water system paving repairs and replacement, sewer paving repairs and replacement. That way, when we go out to get cold patch or blacktop to fix a water line break, we will deposit that expense there so that we can narrow down exactly what it's costing us to do certain things. So essentially what we're doing, it's a lot of tedious work, but we're creating very effective cost centers to clearly get an idea of what the expenses are. And then there are things that are shared among the different departments. In other words, when you look at hand, general hand and power equipment. So if Rod and the guys go out and buy a new drill, it's safe to say that that same drill will be used in the water lines, the sewer lines, park and recreation. So the cost of that hand and power equipment gets spread out to the other funds. So again, that's why you see it's shared within the other funds. There are some things that don't get shared, like the public works general materials and supplies. That doesn't get shared among all the accounts because those accounts have certain materials and supplies that are indicative of them. And so it would be overkill to share too much of it. I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you, which is to give you an idea. Here's another thing that's shared is safety equipment repairs and replacements. So if they have safety equipment that needs to be repaired, the cost of that repair will be shared among all the funds because they use that equipment at all the funds. Personal protective equipment here, if we're doing vest or a harness or something like that, that would be shared among all the, all the funds. And if you see no dollar numbers in the green column, that means we never, we were never putting any money aside for that hypothetically. It might have been in other accounts, but not there. And then your general uniforms and identification. In other words, we buy our guys T-shirts and long sleeve T-shirts that say Town of Rising Sun, which is part of their identification when they go knock on somebody's door. And so we outfit them with boots and pants and shirts. So that's the cost associated with that. And then as you go down, again, all the departments sharing the cost of our website, computer technical, copy machines, you know, so forth and so on. Streets and sidewalks are again, are, um, streets and sidewalks, this is where if you look at the first line item, it would be thirty-two sixty-sixteen on the expense side. I'm showing a hundred thousand dollars for the Ryan Drive paving sunrise to the cul-de-sac. The reason why I am doing this is because, remember what I talked about? If we don't get the grant money, we won't do the project? We are applying for about seven hundred thousand dollars of grant money to replace all of Ryan Drive. All thirty-eight hundred linear feet of Ryan Drive will have a new water line, new service connections to all the houses and then new paving. That's going to cost like seven hundred, for round numbers, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It would really jam the budget up if I started populating that in there and it didn't happen. It would throw the numbers out of whack. So I'm ignoring it for the budget purposes here. If it happens, again, we will have additional revenue that will be met by additional expense at the end of the year and it will wash out and it will be reflected at the end of the year. But what we can't do, as Commissioner Arthur Reith has taken the lead on, is we can't have, if we don't get that grant money from USDA, we can't leave those residents up there with a, you know, just a horrible driving condition with the road. So regardless of whether or not we get grant money, we at the very least are going to pave so from sunrise, uh, from sunrise circle out to the cul-de-sac. And that cost is about a hundred thousand dollars to do that.
And Calvin, just so they know, that's, that's not just to come in and repave. That's the road that we found with all these water breaks that had no subsurface underneath. So we're going to fix that part right, even if we're going to have to come back.
Yeah, the, the price quote includes removing about six inches of dirt because it's, it's a road that's playing on dirt, removing all that dirt, compacting it, coming, coming back with roughly whatever, five or six inches of a, uh, of, of a heavy rock material, compacting that, putting three or four inches of base coat on top of that and then an inch and a half to two inches of top coat. So the road will be done correctly here. So that's what that cost reflects there. So again, when you hear me talking about we're applying for grant money for Ryan Drive, I don't have it anywhere. I don't have it anywhere here in the budget, because there's no guarantee we're going to get it, and it'll just gum up the water to try to track it. I also have, another interesting line item is 326303. We paved Maple Heights Drive last year, but because we did it so late in the paving season, we did not put the street markings out there. So we still need to get in there and get the street markings down. So I have $2,000 set aside for the street markings there.
Hey Calvin, can I ask you a question? Right under that Ryan Drive paving that weed control 2,000 highlighted in yellow, is that highlighted for a specific reason? Or just?
What, what line item are you looking at? A-399.
Right underneath Ryan Drive paving, 100,000, you got 3,000 highlighted, but with no explanation.
Um, just because I wanted you guys to know that that's our cost for having that nice gentleman ride around in a tractor with a big 50-gallon barrel behind him spraying weeds and getting ahead of all the weeds that grow up in the sidewalks. And they're in the process of doing that right now, as we speak, they were in there today. So we're allocating money to do that in the budget also. The engineering, the other item we have at 326813 is a line item account. We are, the engineering for the street evaluation. We still have some work left to do on the street evaluation that Commissioner Arthur Reith had us embark upon. And here's one thing I want to clarify about that, is remember we were talking at the beginning of this about, you know, we're not going to solve all these issues in one year's time, and we need to put a long-range plan together. Part of that long-range plan is the evaluation that Commissioner Arthur Reith initiated to have the engineer come in and do an evaluation of all of our roads. So we're not going to be able to pave anything on the roads this year as a result of that evaluation, but going forward, we will now have budgetary, ballpark budgetary numbers that we can pick and choose from to start picking away at these paving expenditures in the future. So that is basically the second half of the paving project, or the evaluation.
Even when we started this roadmap, we didn't anticipate what happened at Ryan Drive and how fast that moved that to the top of the list.
So there we are with that. The other item in the waste collection, it's been a while since the town has raised its trash collection. And I'm not, I can't really tell you why this happens, but we have been very fortunate in our bidding process. When we first put this out to bid in 2008, we were, we were paying something like $145,000 a year for every two weeks trash collection and no yard waste. And I don't remember if it was every two weeks recycling or once a month recycling, but we were paying a lot of money. We put it out for a four-year bid, and our prices dropped significantly, and we were able to offer trash, yard waste, and recycling collection every week. And there are other communities that sort of envy that to some degree. They have not been able to do that. So we are able to provide that convenience to our residents, but the county has raised its tipping fees by 9%. And as part of our third year of our four-year contract with the trash hauler, the collection, their collection costs are going up 5%. So we're looking at a 14% increase in our trash collection charges. So that's why you're going to see in the attached resolution that this, this, this does not get populated by real estate tax. This is supposed to be like sewer and water, where your charges for sewer covers the sewer, you don't use real estate tax. Your charges for water cover the water, you don't use real estate tax. Well, trash collection is set up the same way, that it, it's, it's, it's supported by an actual dollar per dollar service charge. And so in order to keep that idea moving and not take real estate tax from the police department, code enforcement, or Public Works or Park and Recreation, there's a proposal to raise the trash collection fee per month from the current $17.40, an additional $3.75 a month, which comes out to about 93 cents a week additional more. So for a little under a dollar, we can continue to have trash recycling and yard waste collection on a weekly basis. So the budget is set up with that recommendation. If the board would like to do otherwise, you know, I'd just make that change in here.
And tell me again, 1740, the number you quoted, that is?
21.
Weekly or monthly?
Monthly.
If that's monthly, and then it's going up $3.75 in a month?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I wrote monthly, I just wanted to make sure.
2135 is what we're going to go up to.
So, you know, there's, there's really no big expenses in here, other than you see down here, the trash collection is what we pay the trash hauler, is $87,150 for the people who come in the truck. That's what we pay them. And to dump it at the county landfill, we pay another $53,000 just for the trash. The recycling doesn't really cost us that much money to dispose of our recycling, but we do pay the hauler $42,000 to, to haul it away. So that rate increase here, and here's an example, the, the rate increase of $3.75 is not closing the budget deficit per se, because we're, we're supplementing it with a landfill rebate and then a little bit of real estate tax. So for all intents and purposes, next year's budget, we're going to be operating in the red again. So, you know, I wasn't going to recommend that we raise it to build a little bit of cushion in the year's future. Let's just raise it to get close to breaking even now, as we continue to navigate through the other things that we have to consider in the future. Park and Recreation, there really isn't any, of last year, you see, I'm looking in C-527 for line item account 40-4401, we got $50,000 of leftover grant money last year. We're only, we still have 5,000 of that money left. So our projected revenues are 80,925, dropping down to 49,562. So this is one department that struggles to have the revenue match the expenses here. And now let's look at some of the stuff that we did in here. I think that, I think, and I think a lot of people agree with this, it's hard to put a value on, I've always said that if people understand what they're paying for, they can appreciate it. When you just make blind raises of things and people can't put their finger on what it is, the, what they're getting for, that's what makes your constituents very upset and angry. And by doing the budget the way we are, we're able to say that's...
Mayor wants to speak too. Sorry.
Try that, Mayor. Nope?
Not yet. How about now? Here working, Dave. How about now?
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you go.
All right, I have a Eastern Shore gathering that I have to head to. I want to thank you guys for letting me be a part of this process and for letting me look through the budget with you guys. Calvin, if you can send me an email copy possibly that I can look over, that would be great.
Okay.
All right, I will see you guys later. Thank you so much for letting me be a part of the hearing.
Take care.
See you.
You, the other thing that works real well with constituents, and, and I, I always equate this to my days when I was in the fire service, when you talk about fundraisers and fund drives. And I always said, one of the best ways to get a good return on your fundraisers in a fire company is to make the kids smile. Parents are happy when their kids are happy. And so to a large degree, I'm real excited about the, the new directions we're going with a lot of the public relations things that we are doing, with the Color Fun Run, Sun Fest is getting bigger, you know, every year we have an Arts Council, now the Civil War reenactment, we're going to continue to try to grow upon that. We now have a Fall Festival, which axes are spectacular. So again, in order to track a lot of these things, I have created in the revenue line items, you see, starting at revenue line item 40-4001, park and recreation program fees, that was sort of a catch-all to everything. But what we want to do with the dog park is make that a little bit more contribution sufficient or dependent, because, you know, that, that sort of attracts a special type of person or a unique person, animal lovers. And we want to have events down there, and we want to have fundraisers involved with, with the events that we have, so we can use that money for more amenities in the dog park itself. So in order to do that, we created a dog park contribution line item and a dog park fundraising line item to start to work to get these things to think about being revenue and expense neutral. The Arts Council is another one. We created a contribution fundraiser. Movies in the park, a lot of the movies are paid for by the generous donations of some of our businesses, but we don't track that. That money ends up getting dumped into the general account somewhere, and we have to go in and look to see what the contributions were. Now we'll be able to track that specifically. The Color Fun Run, again, contributions and fundraising revenue. Sun Fest, contributions, fundraising revenue. Fall Fest, seasonal celebrations, which is our Carol singing, if we want to grow that into the Easter egg hunts that we do every once in a while, those line items are created for that. And so a lot of these new accounts now are just the expenditures that would get deposited in those line item accounts. So in other words, you would like to think that the Arts Council expense is going at least be equal to the contribution and the fundraising that they bring in on it. Dave, in terms of your grant applications and moving forward with some of the work that you have to do, I didn't narrow it down, but between the grant and some additional funds I put in here, there's about roughly $10,000 of money for different things that can be done down there, leading up to any potential grants that you get. So that's that there. The other accounts that we have, that we track is our debt service. And that's where our debt service, that's where our loans that we pay out of the general fund, that's where the expense registers out from. So you see your revenue. We have $261,309.46 of revenue. That's made up of the real estate taxes, the income tax, and some of the tax differential. And that money is used to pay for the loan on the town hall building here. It looks like, I'm not sure what that one there is. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the town administration, the police department, and code enforcement all equally share in the cost of the mortgage payment for the building. So you see each department is hit with $23,030.4 roughly every year, and that makes up the total payment of that loan. It's all the same loan, it just comes, it's charged to each one of the different departments. Streets and sidewalks loan, this is the amount of money that we're paying on one of our streets and sidewalks loan, which is made up of $263,325 balance on a 2008 paving loan, and $575,000 in change on a loan that was secured, I believe, in 2013. The other loan that we have is police and auto loan. We paid that off this year, or the year before. That's why there were no expenses. But remember where I talked about getting a loan for the, the $70,000 for police cars? I showed the bank giving us 70,000 in the revenue. I show us expending it to buy the cars of 70,000. Now we have 12 months of payments to make on the $70,000 of proceeds that we got from the bank. And so this $18,960 reflects a principal and interest payment on a loan for two police cars that we're looking to get for roughly four years. With the light, we don't want to be financing things that you replace much sooner than that. So that's where we're looking at roughly a four-year loan, and there's a lot of, there's additional money built into these mortgage payments, because we sort of guessed what the interest rates would be on that. A loan for, one of our loans is going to come due, there's only eight payments left, and that is an old loan on some talented admin cars and Public Works vehicles that we got a couple of years ago. Those loan, those were 10-year loans, and we've actually been making more payments. They were supposed to mature in 2007, but we only have eight payments left at the rate that we're running at. And then there's a new loan that you see on A-608, is a new loan for $12,000, which covers a $1,000 per month principal and interest payment for two Public Works vehicles financed over a 10-year period, because we typically keep our Public Works vehicles for longer than 10 years. So that's where the debt service comes out of. Here's something that we added like in 2008, 2009, which was an emergency management fund. And we've sort of, you know, over the years, we've sort of been pulling rabbits out of a hat in terms of not raising taxes when the recession, the, the mini-recession, whatever you want to call it, was hitting real hard. We used to have a lot more money in the emergency management. And what that was, was to make sure that we had money set aside for that, you know, plane crash or tractor trailer, you know, crash kind of thing, that we were setting aside money every year for something that was not going to be covered by insurance. Well, one of the ways we balanced the budget over the years is to continue to rob from that line item. But yet we still track some, you know, you see placeholders of $100 here and there, because this has proven to be very beneficial. When the, twice now, when there have been FEMA disaster management decrees put out, the town has collected, off the top of my head, I think about maybe $15,000 in total. And having the expense and the revenue show up this way has made, has given us a lot more credibility when we hand it to the FEMA reps to say that these are real expenses, so to speak. So these are placeholders that help us for, to get any reimbursements from FEMA in the future for any of our stuff. So whenever we set our command post up here, about 85% of that cost gets picked up by FEMA. Our Public Works guys being on call, me being here, the chief being here, material costs, that all gets picked up by FEMA. In the past, we were able to pick up some small emergency generators in Hurricane Sandy that FEMA reimbursed us for. So there's a lot of benefit to that, so.
Calvin, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yep.
Back on debt service, before you get too far away from it.
Yep.
Where is the loan for the sewer plant?
That would all be in the, this is a general fund. That's all in the sewer, the sewer and water funds.
Okay, that was my next question, was that each of these debt services are calculated in the individual departments?
Um, yes. Well, only from the standpoint of disaster, oh, I'm sorry, only in the standpoint of the... the town administration loan. In other words, the public works, park and rec doesn't pay towards loan payments on a new public works vehicle.
But like, the police vehicles isn't in this separate police budget, their own debt service that they're accountable for, because they're vehicles. You don't allocate their debt service.
We've already allocated the expense.
But it's not being charged to the police department, is what she's saying.
Right, it's not showing in.
Because we do it as a one-time allocation.
No.
You're doing the expenses at one time. And then, you do the loan, you're basically moving all the loan to just debt service.
Right. But it's not shown on a monthly debt service figure in here.
So hypothetically, there's additional costs for running the police department that are not shown, and that's the car payments.
Right.
On that.
Right, okay, all right.
So that is the general fund. Again, we have a positive cash flow at $15,005.15 here. Do you want me to jump into the proprietary fund? Does anybody have any questions on this?
Maybe we should, maybe we should discuss any questions on this part before we get into, you know, more.
Okay.
Detail.
Calvin, are the loans for the police and public works vehicles being shared across the departments?
No, that's what we were just talking about. They're all coming out of the debts. They're coming out of real estate and income taxes, and they're being charged to the debt service line item account.
And this debt service line item account shows on which of these pages? The general services?
No, because when we make, when we make the expense accounts, when they write out a check, and it gets charged to the line item of fifty dash sixty-two oh two, so that's where it's showing up as the expense. In other words, we created a debt service department. Think of it as like.
You're creating a debt service department, which I'm okay with, except for, I don't understand why.
So you're receiving.
The USDA loan isn't in there. If you're creating a debt service department and you have.
Because it's proprietary funds.
So this is just general funds?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I have a question, are you guys passing this tonight? Are you adopting this budget tonight?
Either tonight or tomorrow night.
Then, when you just saw, when you got it, at what time? Four o'clock? Five o'clock?
Well, it depends on how much we digest of it. I mean, that's why we're going through this.
We've been, I've, I've been at least having some conversations every, you know, Calvin's in here pretty much all weekend, so I've stopped in a few times and talked to him about it.
But like, the mayor's never seen it? I mean, he said that. He said he's never seen the budget until he's got a copy by email.
Well, there's a clarification here. All of these expenses in here and revenues are, they happen regardless. All the stuff about spending money on buildings and police cars, the discussions on that go back, you know, months in that.
That's true.
So, you know, there isn't, to be honest, there isn't a whole lot of discussion on, you know, how much we're going to spend in nuts and bolts in the public works department. The discussions are about salaries, the discussions about, are we going to buy one vehicle, no vehicles? Are we going to cut staffing? Are we going to increase staffing? Those discussions have been going on.
Well, staffing already got cut.
What's that?
Staffing already got cut.
Not Stephanie.
Staffing.
Staffing.
Yes, staffing got cut, yes.
When was the vote on that? The vote on cutting the staffing?
It's not, it's not a vote that's taken, it's an internal personnel. I mean, think of it this way, Lisi, I don't think anybody would want to come to a town meeting and have a public discussion about whether or not they're going to be fired. So it doesn't, it's not something that's voted on. It's something that you have a department head who's charged with making the recommendation gone in, and he makes a recommendation that we need to move in a different direction, and that's, that's the way it's done.
The water and sewer, I'm sorry, that's what we're still talking about.
Is there any questions about, you know, the summary that he went over and the, you know, the way that it was laid out as far as, for example, you know, the healthcare cost analysis and the overtime cost analysis, are we all in agreement on that methodology? So there's no, no questions about that? All right, I don't, I mean, we've, I'm okay with all of this, and I just wanted to make sure we stopped and had asked questions. Are you ready to move on to?
I'm ready, I'm ready.
Okay. We can move on then to sewer.
All right, on the, we'll do the water fund first, and the water fund is projecting revenues of $816,829.25, and expenses of $757,333, with a positive cash flow of $59,496.14 in the, in the water fund. Some of the bigger items in the water fund are, and let me, let me phrase it this way, there's no surprises, there's really not any surprises in any of the stuff. We've been, in any of these budgets, we've been talking about this stuff for the longest time and laying the groundwork for it. You know, so some of the big ticket items in here, like the Chester Water, the negotiations, and the money that we're going to need to close on any potential USDA funding, the legal money, the legal advice we're going to need between the negotiation with Chester Water and the closing on any financing, or the acquisition of any financing is $35,000. I have it highlighted in green because those, those expenses are reimbursable in your financing with USDA. If you recall, from the sewer department, we have, I think maybe about, off the top of my head, 1.5, 1.8 million dollars in consulting fees going all the way back to roughly 2009 or so that were covered as part of USDA's financing. So that's covered by USDA. $10,000 here, I'm looking at line item seventy, sixty-three, fifty-five. This is in response, and I'll say it this way, this is in response to Commissioner Warnock and Commissioner Arthur Rees asking that we set aside some money to fix some of the buildings down at the water plants. That's something that we've been kicking around for a couple of weeks now. There's, because we created new line item accounts with names that makes it easier to follow, we have $4,000 of pump repairs down there. Those funds have typically been absorbed in other accounts in the past. For instance, this one that says maintenance, repairs, and replacements is a line item where pump repairs would have been put in in the past. We have $10,000 set aside for the contractor to do, like, if we have any more emergencies this year, we're now going to, we were tracking it last year, but for whatever reason, the money was being put in some other accounts at significant numbers here. And so, that's why they were not, let me find one here that gives you an example of Here you see contracted services here. I'm looking at seventy, sixty-eight, oh eight. It's contracted services. In the past, that could be something that's more or less for doing rate studies and financial consultants. All the costs associated with the contractor helping the town will put in that line item. So you see the projected $36,241 through the end of June. That money really should, in the future, be allocated to this account for the contracted services here, account number seventy, sixty-three, sixty-three. So that's where money like that would be deposited in the future. So you have $10,000 earmarked for next year for that, anticipating we're not going to have any bad breaks like we did last year. Here is an example of where the allocation works better, seventy, sixty-four, hundred here. That is the missed utility. That is when anybody's going to dig anything in town, they call missed utility, we get a notification to come out and mark our sewer water lines in the street. All of those costs were being earmarked to the sewer fund. They were not being split between the two. So our annual cost is, we're projecting $25,000, I think last year's annual cost was about 22. We're projecting it at 25, and we're splitting it 50/50 between the two accounts. So that's why you see a $12,500 expenditure ballooning up from the 143, because it wasn't being allocated to that count, that count in the past. Electric, water electric costs, it's pretty much staying stable. The heating, that's another one of our, you know, another one of our big expenditures is on the electric bill for the water plant. So when you look at the proprietary fund for water, your big ticket items are the Chester Water work, the electric work, and then, moving down, we have contracted services for engineering, $100,000. A portion of this is set aside for the engineering required to redo Ryan Drive, because a lot of that, if we do it through the USDA funding, that's going to be redoing the water line, so there's going to be engineering required in that. And the other money associated with that is that if we get our grant money through USDA, we're going to need to engineer the water line itself. So there's some grant money, and that, that's actually, let me correct myself, that $100,000 is for the preliminary engineering reports and the environmental engineering report for both Ryan Drive and the Chester Water Line. The cost to actually design that water line might be, you know, the sewer plant was $500 somewhat thousand dollars to design the sewer plant. So that's what we would expect in a future budget for the, the cost to design the water line. $50,000 is set aside to continue with our rate studies and impact fee analysis as we're moving forward with the Chester Water and people, developers potentially wanting to come in, that would be an expense that we would want to get those financial reports together, so we know what to be charging people. Again, that's one of those, if the expense, if the need does not present itself, then the expenditure will not be there. But if we do have to make the expenditure, then it's reimbursable under USDA. So all of the other items in here, again, are just your, your cost for chemicals. I'm going up the line item seventy, sixty-seven, oh one. A lot of these charges are just your everyday overhead and running the department.
Jane has a question. Jane has a question.
The money that you spent on like missed utility, you have like $50,000, does that recoup through like building permits or something, for somebody like, that's his money?
Yeah, yeah, it's 25,000.
So if somebody wants to build like an extension on their house, and you've got to go out and mark where the utility lies and all that, it doesn't get recovered by the townsman here?
The bulk, the bulk of missed utility is not people putting sheds up. The bulk of it is, you know, any number of things. The, you know, when the phone company or the Delmarva was running new lines down in Valley View, that, that triggers missed utility reports. It's usually the other utility companies that trigger the missed utility reports for us.
You can't bill them for that?
I've never heard of anybody doing that. So.
Gee, that's not a trend.
Yeah, yeah. It's something to look into. It is a lot of money.
On the merchant services cost, because you're projecting by June year-end, between merchant services charges and bank charges, about $3,200, but then, in the proposed budget, you drop it down to 1,700. What's the, the theory in, in that? Because I, my assumption was that the merchant charges were predominantly people paying what they call their water bill, and having the ability to pay that at a, you know, with a fee, but.
Yes.
So do you anticipate less people will use that service?
No, it's, it's, remember, I talked about the shared services. That's only half of it. The sewer department picks up the other half.
Oh, okay. So then, can we show the revenue line item then that offsets that from the fees that people pay?
We're not, we're not showing that right now. It gets buried in the utility.
That's what I thought. So it's buried up here in this total number?
Yes, yes.
It would be nice to create the line item to, to, to show that, since we've created some other new accounts and that, and really being able to demonstrate the, you know, the benefit of those fees. And it certainly offsets costs, because that amount that we pay for merchant services isn't anything to kind of, we have some smaller line items in here than that that are offset.
Yeah, I'm wondering, it could be done, we'll have to get creative on it, because all we get from the bank is that somebody put a $75 charge on, we got 75, so we'd have to go in and do the calculation of how much of the 75 is attributable to the actual usage, and then, how much is the R cost to the merchant company?
Or you can, your merchant, your merchant bill shows you how many people have used it.
Yeah.
So you take 75, and then, 75 people have used it, average bill is X, and the percentage that they pay, you could come up with a revenue number based on that.
So that is the water side.
Okay.
The sewer side, it's almost identical to the water side. The revenue is 655, 707, and the expense is 603, 258, 94, for a positive cash flow The big ticket items in the sewer departments, again, your pink areas are shared services in here. Here's your merchant, so, I'm sorry, here's your missed utility, line number 140 is the missed utility cost. And then, your merchant services, here's the other half, down at the bottom, the F160 is the other half. And you'll see where all the merchant services, for the most part, will be put into the water fund. And then, let me show you the missed utility. If you go to line 140, blue line 140, you see missed utility, and if you go over to the column, you see $22,608. And if you remember, there was nothing in the water side, it was all being put to the sewer side. So it's now being shared 50/50. The other thing that, again, we're anticipating, we're looking at a crystal ball, is the electric for the sewer plant. We're expecting, although we've had some increase in electrical costs. We're expecting, although we've had some increase in electrical costs during the construction of the sewer plant, we're not sure exactly how much that's going to be. So we have $20,000 in there for the electrical cost for the sewer plant. There's another item that I wanted to show you. We have $8,000 set aside for potential MDE fines because we always run the risk of that, so I always carry money in the budget in case we get fined. There's a new line item account on blue line 168 that's for the third-party plant operator. We, as you know, at the last meeting, we brought a third-party outfit in to operate the sewer plant. This covers the projected cost of that contract plus about another $10,000 if there's other things we have them do or whatever. So we've got $95,000 set aside for that. The backup system on blue line 177, the backup system, that number is shared among all the other accounts, but I added $1,000 to it because I'm sure that with the server, the system down there is a computer-operated system, so we will probably want to get a backup for that, so I just added another $1,000 to the sewer side for that to cover the cost of a backup for that.
And the debt service is where on here?
The problem with the debt service is it's capitalized out in government accounting standards, and so the depreciation is what is used to offset that. So when you look at line item 116.
Right, I would expect to see at least interest expense in here, but.
Excuse me?
I would expect to see interest expense in here in addition to depreciation.
In talking to Wagner, you don't show the, you don't, look, I've always said I'm not a bean counter, I'm a cash-in, cash-out kind of guy, and I go through this all the time that the auditors and the accountants wanted to look a certain way for the bean counting, you know, way of doing it. The depreciation is supposed to cover the payments that we make, but it's not broken It's not broken out in interest.
is at least three times more than that depreciation figure. And at what point do we, in this budget, all I would expect to see is the interest expense, you don't factor it. You created a debt service account to show the principal and interest, debt service, which I agree with, but in this budget of expense line items, we should at least have, if the interest expense of that particular loan, given its size, because of how it impacts this budget and where, you know, our charges and everything come to offset the expense of building it. So just the interest expense should be in there, and it's probably about three times the size of that line item. So I would, I'm guessing the, you know, your.
This is your budget, not your balance sheet, though, I guess, and maybe I'm missing.
It's not on the balance sheet, it's on the, like, this would be, this is your P&amp;L of what our revenues are and what our expenses are, and that interest expense is, your revenues have to offset that, particularly given the size of that particular loan. And if it's not covered on your debt service account, which is the debt service account you created, it needs to be in an expense line item because that would sway these numbers.
Why don't I have her come and explain that tomorrow? Because it's a conversation I've had all the time regarding.
Well, when she goes through the, and that's fine, when she goes through the financial statements for the, she always has interest expense as a line item in expenses. So in this budget, it should reflect, you have it broken out far, in far more categories than the condensed version that she presents, but it should be in there.
Yeah.
Well, with that said, was there any more discussion about the individual line items I really appreciate all the detail and everything that went into it because it certainly was a lot for you to present, but it certainly eliminates a lot of potential questions. So, other than the few that we had, anybody else have any questions? Because it sounds like we need to continue this until tomorrow. Does everybody agree on that?
Give us a chance to study it, digest it more.
Right.
I'd just like to thank you, because I know, I mean, I've seen you in here, like, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, just about every night this weekend. So I know you've been working this over and over and over to make all the numbers work, so I appreciate all you've put into it.
No, I regret that we weren't, it's, you know, it's great that we have agencies saying it will provide you with funds to do things, but unfortunately, the deadline for applying for those was June 30th. And so when you go to your consultants to say, put a grant together for all these things, they want to stretch it right up to June 25th, whatever, before they have to hand it in. So we don't get any of the numbers that we need and how the trickle-down effect is. I mean, as we were talking about, you know, as you guys know, I'm always bouncing ideas off you guys as we go through this process, that, you know, a week ago, we weren't even, you know, two weeks ago, we weren't even sure we were going to be able to do some of the things that we're doing in here until, you know, we get all the final numbers in, so.
So we will reconvene this meeting at 5:30 again tomorrow, or is it 6:00?
We do 6:00 tomorrow because I got to come from Delaware.
We can do 6:00.
I got to come from Washington.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. So 6:00 tomorrow, that we'll finish up any last-minute discussion items and get some feedback on that.
Yes, send me any additional questions that you have, and gather them.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh.
You don't.
I'm sorry, I motion.
You can do it two ways. You can adjourn the meeting and let the public know you're going to meet again tomorrow, or you don't adjourn the meeting and continue it tomorrow night, so it's a continuation.
It's a continuation.
Tomorrow, so you have your choice. You can adjourn it and then say you're going to meet again, and that's your notice to the public, or you just say you're going to continue it tomorrow night.
I motion that we continue tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.